Do you know someone who's been an outstanding volunteer in the town of Bridgewater? Well, this is your chance to recognize them. The town of Bridgewater has put in a call for nominees for the Representative Volunteer Award, the Volunteer Family Award, and the Corporate Volunteer Award for 2022. Deadline for nominations is Friday, March 18th. You can find nomination packages at bridgewater.ca/volunteer or by calling the Community Development Department at 902-543-2274. This is your chance to say thank you to those who've given back to Bridgewater.
I'm Amanda Fancy. I'm the dealer-owner of Gau's Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. We had lots of opportunity to potentially look at outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then our customer reach is about 45,000. So we're talking about lots of small communities, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there would be some strong investment opportunities for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Conservatory of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal. So I'm trying, I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister. So I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian...
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order and just acknowledge that the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq'i, the ancestral unceded and unsurrendered territory of the Mi'kmaq people. And we are very fortunate to be here in that community. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, motion to approve the agenda circulated, please. Councillor McDonald, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those. All right, we have an agenda. Are there any announcements from members of council? Still kind of a quiet time. I know that as restrictions lift, as we get towards the end of March, we're looking at doing a Talk Bridgewater session back in person. So we haven't set a specific date yet. We were looking at the 21st, but I think we'll probably have a few more conversations with staff and council, just to gauge everyone's comfort and maybe through our own channels, talk to people in the public, just to see if they're interested in talking. I know it's still a little, I was talking to a staff person the other day who was at the LCLC in the pool mask off, and it was their first time in like in public without a mask. And they said it was very surreal to be around other people with a mask off. So I just want to be obviously very aware that people might still be uncomfortable. That's our goal, is to, as we go into budget season, do a Talk Bridgewater, get out there and chat with people, and introduce Greg, our new Economic Development Officer, who's going to hang out with us while we do that. Any other announcements from council? All right, and just before we go into the minutes, I'll just acknowledge that our community, our thoughts, our prayers are with the people of Ukraine as they go through this. And we obviously hope for peace and hope that things will change, but we are thinking of that community and the residents of that country who are quite innocent and yet victims. So it's just, it's a tragedy. The minutes of February 14th council meeting are in your agenda package. Any errors or omissions there? Hearing none, motion to approve the minutes is circulated.
So moved.
Councillor Colgan has hand up, seconded by Councillor Thorburn, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Hearing none, minutes are approved, and we will go down to planning items. Item 6.1 is the application for development agreement and notice of public participation meeting for 370 Jubilee Road. And I see that Mackenzie Childs is with us to walk us through this one.
Hi. Yeah, so just briefly, a little summary. An application was received on November 10th, 2021 by ZAC Architecture and Planning, and that was on behalf of Marshawn Developments Limited for a development agreement to develop a master-planned community with 886 housing units on the lands located at 370 Jubilee Road. The majority of the subject property is located in town, and there's a small section located in the municipality of the District of Lunenburg. However, the development is proposed to be located solely on the lands within the town. The property is 36.85 acres and is not currently developed, it's fields and forests. The subject property abuts Jubilee Road, Exhibition Drive, Westmount Heights, and Duffin Street, and nearly connects to McMack Avenue, but is separated by a privately-owned lot there. The majority of the subject property is zoned as comprehensive residential, or R3, and it's designated similarly as comprehensive residential on the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy. Additionally, a small portion of the property that connects to Duffin Street is zoned as single-unit residential. And in our three-zone, collective residential development, up to a maximum of 25 units per acre, requires a development agreement. That's why it would be going through this process. And that one area of the property that's zoned as R1 is just proposed to be an active transportation connection. There's no buildings planned for that area. The applicant is proposing nine multi-unit buildings, and those would contain a total of 822 units, ranging from 70 to 114 units per building. The multi-unit buildings would be five and six stories. They're also proposing nine townhouse buildings that would be composed of 38 stacked townhouse units and 26 regular townhouse units. The development plan indicates two new public streets in this area. One would connect to the intersection that exists at Jubilee Road and Olympiad Avenue, and it would travel up through the property to the end of Westmount Heights. And the other would extend from that proposed street to the end of the privately-owned property that's located adjacent to McMack Avenue, so it wouldn't quite connect to it. Additionally, just under four acres of the property would be kept as parkland, as required through the parkland dedication requirements of the subdivision bylaw. There's an existing water course in there that would run through and along the edge of that parkland, and they propose to add an active transportation connection within that park as well, and that would connect the new streets and the developments to Exhibition Drive right near the entrance to Woodland Gardens. So there's no motion required for this agenda item, but a public participation meeting has been scheduled for Wednesday, March 9th at 6:00 PM. It'll be held virtually and registration is required.
That's great, thanks. Are there any questions from council on this? Obviously, this will be coming back a few times to council after public input and things. Councillor Caldwell.
Has the applicant given any idea about the timelines for the different phases of the development?
No timeline. So they have proposed three different phases, but they haven't set any timelines yet. That is something that we're going to look into for the development agreement, though.
Other questions? Just more development. We know we need housing, we knew we'd need more housing options, so we'll see where this goes. Great, thank you for that. Our next one is first reading report, 25 Queen Street.
Go for me. Okay, can everyone see that presentation?
Yep.
So an application for this was submitted to develop a multi-unit residential development at 25 Queen Street, and this would be through development agreements. You can see the location shown on here. It's in the middle of the block of Queen Street that's located between Phoenix and Dominion, and it's the location of the old Fairview Inn. For some context, this is an image looking at the site from Queen Street. You can see that the property is currently vacant, it has those old stairs from the hotel and some existing trees. This is a map showing the zoning of the property and the surrounding area. The property is shown with the red dotted line. The property is zoned as downtown residential, or R4, in the land use bylaw, and this zone permits single-unit dwellings, two-unit dwellings, and residential conversions of up to four units as of right, and then also multiple uses by development agreement, including multi-unit residential up to 15 units per acre. The property is designated as medium-density residential on the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy, and this designation identifies all lands that support residential development of medium densities, and its intent is to accommodate compact and more affordable housing options to meet the diverse housing needs of citizens. The surrounding zoning is the same, the downtown residential zoning, as well as high-density residential institutional and restricted commercial with the historic downtown commercial zone nearby. There are a variety of surrounding uses, including single-unit residential, two-unit residential, multi-unit residential, a church, the schools, and some commercial and recreation nearby as well. The application is to construct two nine-unit residential buildings on the property. The applicant would subdivide the lot into two and then construct a building, a driveway, and parking on each of the lots. The two lots would connect with shared exterior space and the pathway. Two separate development agreements are required because there would be two resulting lots, and the developer wanted to maximize their density with affordable housing bonus that would be used on the two lots. Since the development agreements would be nearly identical, it made sense to just put them together into one report and presentation, so I'll be speaking to them both. The two buildings are each proposed to be three stories, and there would be a combination of one- and two-bedroom units, with the majority being two-bedroom. So this is the proposed site plan of the development. You can see along the middle of the image where the lot would subdivide, right in through here. The buildings would be slightly offset along the front property line, and there would be approximately 10 feet over here between the west side building and the front property line, and about 22 feet between the east side building and the front property line. There'd be approximately 32 to 35 feet from the buildings to the adjacent property lines on the side, with the driveways located in between. The site plan includes fencing along the periphery of the property and shows the existing trees that they've proposed to retain. There would be above-ground parking located behind both of the buildings, and a driveway and sidewalk connecting each of them to the street. The site plan shows the shared common patio intersecting the property line in between the two buildings, as well as a pathway connecting the existing stairs at the front of the property. The main entrances to the buildings would be on the sides facing the adjacent properties, so along the driveway, and there would be that sidewalk connection to the entrances. This slide and the next show elevation drawings of the proposed buildings. The buildings would be approximately 40 feet tall, and would be the same as each other, just mirrored. They would be three-story buildings, and they were designed to reflect aspects of neighboring four-square-style houses that can be found along Queen Street. As mentioned, the main entrances would be on the side of the building, but staff worked with the developer to include a front door for one of the units to mimic the design of the surrounding single-unit residences. And these are elevation drawings showing the buildings from the side, so the top drawing would be the view that would be seen from the shared space in between the buildings, so that you would see that on either side. And the bottom drawing would be the side view seen from the properties on either side. You can see there are balconies proposed for the units, which are located on the inner sides of the buildings, as well as the back. And the main entrances to the buildings, as I said, are on the outside facing façades. So when creating a development agreement, there's a variety of factors that staff consider. One of them is parking and traffic. The land use bylaw requires a set amount of parking for all developments. Since this development would be permitted through a development agreement, the land use bylaw is used as a guideline and doesn't have to be strictly adhered to. This slide shows the parking required by the land use bylaw and the proposed spaces for the development. The land use bylaw requires 12 vehicular spaces, parking spaces, per lot, or 23 in total for the two of them, and the applicant is proposing nine per lot, or 18 in total. They would be providing one barrier-free space on each lot, which are required, and staff believe this amount of parking at a one-to-one ratio with the units is sufficient. The vehicular parking would be located in the rear of the properties, as was shown on the site plan. The DAs include that there must be a minimum of nine vehicular and five bicycle parking spaces, and that the location of the driveways and sidewalks would have to be constructed in the location as shown on the site plan. The land use bylaw requires five bicycle parking spaces per lot, or 10 in total, and they are providing the same. And the bicycle parking would be located just off the sidewalk along each driveway, near the main entrances. A traffic study has been conducted and reviewed by engineering staff. It was noted that construction might need to include any improvements needed to achieve the appropriate site stopping and site turning distances at the driveways. It also noted that traffic volumes do differ during the school year, as this area is frequently used by school users for parking. It was concluded that the additional vehicular traffic would have little impact on traffic volumes, and the street infrastructure can accommodate it, although the final detailed review is conducted upon permitting if the development agreement is approved. Amenity space and landscaping are also reviewed, and the land use bylaw requires amenity space for multi-unit residential developments in this zone. And based on the unit type, 1,890 square feet would be required, and the applicant is proposing 1,931 square feet, made up of a common patio and private patios or balconies for each unit. And regarding landscaping, the applicant intends to keep as many of the mature trees as possible, and staff have written this into the development agreement. So the development agreement states that existing mature trees located between the front of the main structure and Queen Street shall not be removed unless that are diseased, and only then with prior approval of the development officer. The development agreement also would require a six-foot-tall wooden fence on both side property lines. And additionally, a landscaping plan would be required prior to the issuance of any development permit, and it would include the location of the mature trees, additional existing vegetation they propose to keep, and more details. The property is located in the residential architectural control area, and this area is focused on the appearance of public building façades for main buildings built prior to 1920, main buildings built after 1997, and certain accessory structures. These, however, do not have to be strictly adhered to through the development agreement process, but the applicant has worked with staff to meet some of the requirements. As mentioned before, the design details reflect a four-square-style house that can be found in the area. A front porch is included, which aims to pay homage to the Fairview Inn and the housing style. Vinyl and wood siding is being used, but it's designed to resemble board and button, or more historical, façades. And additionally, some architectural details, such as the pitched roof, dormer window, and front door with side lights, is being proposed. The development agreement includes a section on building characteristics that states architectural style and character-defining details of the building shall be in substantive accordance with the elevation drawings that were provided, and other design elements, such as the siding, shall be in reasonable accordance, because they're not traditional materials, so staff don't want to limit them from using traditional materials if they'd The land use bylaw doesn't require affordable housing units in any developments. However, for certain developments in certain zones, a developer may increase their density by 20% through the affordable housing bonus if they choose. So without this bonus, 15 units per acre is permitted by development agreement in this zone. The additional 20% density of the 15 units per acre permitted in this zone is three additional units. In order to get that housing bonus of three units, 50% of those have to be affordable, so that's 1.5, but we would round it up to two, and so two of them would have to be affordable. And based on the area of the property, six units are permitted on each of the new lots, so the two different lots, without the density bonus. And this means that in total, these six units plus the three units from the bonus equals nine in total are permitted on each lot. And that would permit 18 units in total on the current property. It's up to the developer to work with a third-party housing organization to create an agreement for these units, and the development agreement would say that a maximum of nine dwelling units are permitted, and a minimum of two of them would have to be affordable. So to summarize the development agreement, the development agreements are nearly identical, except one of them talks about the retention of the existing stairs at the front of the property, as it falls on one of the lots. So I've just included, summarized them both here. I've touched on most of them already, but it does state, or they do state, that a maximum of nine units are permitted on each lot, and two of those have to be affordable. It talks about the height-massing, architectural style, and character-defining details of the buildings need to be in substantive accordance with the elevation drawings, and that other exterior design elements need to be in reasonable accordance. It says that a detailed landscaping plan is required, that includes the existing mature trees that shall be retained, that wherever possible, existing vegetation is retained, and a six-foot-high wooden fence is required between the development and the adjacent properties at the side. It states that there would be a minimum of 1,900 square feet of amenity space, which would include private balconies and patios for each unit. It would state that a minimum of nine vehicular and five bicycle parking spaces are required per lot, and shall be located in substantively the same location as shown on the site plan that was provided. And additionally, that driveways and walkways from Queen Street shall be in substantively the same location shown on the site plan. They state that solid waste shall be visually separated from adjacent residential development in public areas, that a detailed submission for the approval of services and a stormwater management plan shall be required prior to the issuance of a development permit, and that water supply and flows are adequate for fire protection. Most of the matters in the development agreement are non-substantive, which means they can be changed without a public hearing, but those that are substantive are the permitted use, the number of units, and the height-massing, architectural style, and character-defining details of the building. So those would be substantive and would require a public hearing for any amendments. A public participation meeting was held on November 24th, and notification was provided to properties within 100 feet of the subject property, as well an ad was posted in the Snowshore Breaker, and it was posted on the town Facebook page. Seven members of the public attended, and overall, the main concerns were a lack of parking and additional traffic congestion in the area. And there were also questions about the process, the construction process and the DA process, the building height, the impact of stormwater on adjacent properties, and the retention of existing landscaping. Staff review the town's policies and the municipal planning strategy when analyzing and creating development agreements. And this property is located in the medium-density residential designation. Most of the lands in this designation are found adjacent to downtown on the west side of the river. The intent of this designation is to accommodate compact and more affordable housing options to meet diverse housing needs, and includes high-density residential development by the development agreement. The main rationale for an increase in residential density near the downtown is to help promote walkability and improve accessibility to nearby shops, offices, and amenities, and staff believe that there is compatibility with this designation. The downtown residential, or R4, zone falls within this medium-density residential designation, and the zone includes lands that contain varied architectural styles and character-defining elements that help contribute to Bridgewater's culture and identity. Although this area is regarded as one of the town's oldest and distinguishable neighborhoods in response to diversifying housing needs, it now contains multiple single-unit residential dwellings that have been converted to multi-unit dwellings over the last several decades. The aim of this zone is to continue to accommodate low and medium-density development and residential conversions while respecting the character of the built form, and staff believe that there is compatibility with this zone as well. Overall, staff believe the application is supported in policy. There is compatibility of the youth and the building. This includes height, density, and certain architectural controls that have been adhered to, even though it wasn't required. Nearby uses include a variety of residential types that vary between one and two-and-a-half stories, and the property is in close proximity to the commercial downtown. The development would help support a full range of housing, and this would be done through a mix of one- and two-bedroom units, as well as the inclusion of affordable units. Additionally, there's a planning concept called the missing middle, which means that medium-density residential development is less common than low and high-density development now. Medium-density development can help create denser neighborhoods while still maintaining compatibility with adjacent properties, and this development would help fill such a gap in town. Policy promotes residential densification, and as this would be an infill development of a vacant lot at a medium level of density near the downtown core, it would be supported in this policy. There are policies that focus on integrating developments using appropriate landscaping, and this would be done through the provision of a landscaping plan, retaining the existing mature trees, and including the fencing along the sides. There are also policies outlining amenity space requirements, which have been met. Some policies focus on the integration of active transportation routes and parking requirements. As mentioned, walkways would be required to the development, and the property is located just adjacent to the downtown, so it's in a walkable and bikeable area, and the bicycle parking requirements of the land use bylaw have been met. The vehicular parking is less than outlined in the land use bylaw, but staff believe it's sufficient, as one vehicle per unit would support and encourage residents to pursue alternative methods of transportation. Some policies focus on environmental impacts of the proposed development and consideration of any contamination of the existing site. An environmental site assessment was not required by staff, but the developer has completed a Phase 1. It's not been shared with staff, but the developer stated there are no issues of concern and can share it upon request. Policies focusing on infrastructure were reviewed. There were initial concerns from staff that the sewer infrastructure may not be sufficient in this area of town for the development. However, a downstream combined sewer capacity analysis was completed, and staff determined that the proposed number of units on this property could be accommodated without any infrastructure improvements. A traffic impact study was completed for a previous application at this site that was looking for 30 units, and that study concluded that there would be little impact to traffic volumes, so the proposed 19 units would also be acceptable. Planning staffer overall have the opinion that the MPS objectives and the statements support the proposed development. Just finally, showing the timeline of the development agreement process. We're at the first reading stage, and staff recommend that council give first consideration to the development agreements, as contained in Appendix A and B for 25 Queen Street, and schedule a public hearing during the regularly scheduled council meeting on March 28th.
Great, thank you for your presentation, Mackenzie. I'll open it up to questions, and just before we take questions, just give your escribe a quick refresh, folks, just because the document number, we need to update the document number. So if you just do that, then when we get further down, we'll have the right one. Questions of our planner? Councillor McDonald.
I'm pretty sure I heard you say this, but I just wanted to double-check. That's an older street in town, and there is on-street parking in that section of Queen Street, is there not?
That's right, yes, there is, yeah.
Other questions, comments? Councillor Caldwell.
Yeah, just a comment that I'm really pleased that the development agreement colludes the retention of the mature trees out front, and also the architectural controls, including the porch that's an homage to the Fairview. I'm really pleased to see that. And just related to the parking, so is there parking available during school hours on Queen Street, or is that filled up?
It's definitely busier. I think the, in that time, a lot of the space is filled up, and I know some of the existing residents on Queen Street also park on the street, so it's definitely busier at those times, but it is open to anyone to park there. So that's one of the reasons that staff feels the one-to-one ratio, which is a little bit lower than the land use bylaw, is still sufficient, because if someone happened, if someone was visiting, they are still, they still do have parking in that area. But yeah, it does get busier then.
Councillor Thorburn.
Not really, just a comment, it's nice to see that bonus density clause being used that gives us for low-income housing, or affordable housing, I guess it's called now. And it's nice to see that infrastructure on that street, that was my other question, will support this development without any changes, because that's an older street with older infrastructure. It's nice to see that that will still support that. Thank you, Mackenzie, for the detailed report.
Other questions or... The questions or? Comments? I'll just, I'll just echo that what Council Thorburn just said. It's really nice to see the bonus density being taken advantage of to uh to get uh some additional affordable units in our community. And I hope other developers will also take advantage of that uh, that bonus density. Okay, uh, is someone prepared to make a motion and uh set this for a public hearing on March twenty-eighth? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Uh, just to confirm, the document is twenty-one dash one four zero A?
I have one.
It's actually twenty-one dash one four seven A.
Okay. Uh, so I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give first consideration to the development agreements as contained in Appendix A and B, a document twenty-one dash one four seven A for twenty-five Queen Street and schedule a public hearing uh during the regularly scheduled council meeting on March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a second, or? Oh, everyone took the same time. Council Caldwell, I saw your hand first. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Childs, for two great presentations. Uh, we're down to reports and recommendations. Nine point one, Lunenburg County Multipurpose Center Corporation, the twenty-two, twenty-three capital and operating budgets. And I know that we have the general manager here. Um, Kent, are you gonna walk us through this?
Yep, happily.
Perfect.
Thanks for, thanks for seeing me tonight. I'm gonna share my screen. I uh can't see you very well when I share my screen, so just shout if uh. Show it if you have any questions. So I think that this, this document was circulated in your agenda, so hopefully you've had a chance to um go through it. And if any questions, uh, they'll, they'll come out. I just wanted to kind of lead in with the, the high-level year-over-year changes. So uh, you know, this is obviously, obviously been another uh really tumultuous year for us in terms of revenue and predictability. We had a closure in, in uh April, May, and then another kind of set of restrictions in December that really took the wind out of our sails to a significant degree. We're hoping, you know, really optimistic that uh starting on March twenty-first, we'll be on the road to uh, to kind of seeing, seeing more consistent traffic and, and having a more predictable kind of cadence forward. Um, so it, it was challenging to predict revenue, given the kind of two-year break in, uh, you know, break in the kind of norm uh that we've had. But the aquatic center, so you'll see a significant increase in the aquatic center revenues uh projected. That's largely, last year, we had a bit of an anomaly where we, um, our, our fourth, uh, our fourth session of swim lessons uh was sold in the pre, in, in the previous year. And then because of the closures, we refunded it this year. Um, so it, it wasn't even the case of taking money and sending it back. It was, we had taken it the year before and then had to take kind of a, a significant loss uh in that. So um, and you know, the, the swim lessons are a big revenue generator for us. So, so that is uh kind of harkening back to three years ago, uh, the, the kind of projected revenue. Active Living is uh an increased line, and that has a lot to do with the increase in the summer camp, so that's where those uh revenues are captured. The, uh, you'll see uh rent again for the cafe, so Fancy Pants has taken over operations of the cafe in February. And so that becomes a, a, you know, another tenant and a steady stream of, of uh, of revenue for us. And then miscellaneous revenue is kind of a projection on uh some of the grants and subsidies that we, uh, that we apply through, for, throughout the year. In the, uh, in the expense side, so the big, uh, the big change is facility and maintenance is becoming a, a very volatile line as the, as the building ages. We had uh several pretty significant repairs this year and have done some capital planning or some capital lifecycle work to try and project some of those long-term costs and uh, and come to you with more, you know, a more tailored budget. It is hard. There's, you know, a lot of the, uh, a lot of the components have very generic kind of life, lifespans, and they can come up short of that at any point. And, and uh, most, uh, most if not all of the components within the facility are critical to the, to the operation. So when they go down, we don't really have a lot of choice but to, um, but to maintain them. But through a more consistent kind of cycle of building maintenance and preventative maintenance, I think we are getting to a place um in this, the, the eighth and ninth year where we have a, a bit better handle on uh, on what's coming up. The uh, the recommendation this year is that we have added a, a thirty thousand dollar contingency account. So to deal with those larger issues that come up with the, uh, with the ice plant or with the, uh, the aquatic facility, with the air handlers, with the building in general, to, uh, to deal with all of that. The um, the energy project we're doing as well, some of the recommissioning, like we are within that project, um, adding some new, some new infrastructure. So that will all be brand-new, and we hopefully won't have to worry about that for a very long time. Um, IT licensing and support, so that's an increase year-over-year, um, especially from two or three years ago. So that is the cost associated with the investment in software and hardware to host Connect Rec. So providing that, that uh registration hub for the town, the municipality, and the LCLC. Um, the, the decision was made pretty early on that there wouldn't be any kind of uh, like invoicing, or there wouldn't be any charge to the municipal partners. It would all be kind of borne through the, um, through the LCLC budget. So that's, that represents the entire cost of that project. Um, there's nothing else that kind of shows up in your recreation lines for that. Utilities are down, so as a result of um the ice being out while we do construction this summer and then the, um, and then the energy reduction through those retrofits that are taking place. We'll, we'll see a savings on the energy. Um, and we are, we are captured in your energy management plan. So that's also kind of a, those are steps towards uh meeting, meeting town goals and getting towards that. Uh, you know, those, those objectives of reducing the greenhouse gas impacts. And then um, the biggest increase is around wages and benefits, and I spelled out the kind of number of factors that play into that. So the increase in the Consumer Price Index is a, it's actually four point eight percent um in December. So that represents a pretty significant year-over-year increase um in wages. Um, we did a market correction for lifeguards and aquatic instructors uh with the board and kind of increased some of those wages for, really twofold. It was recognizing kind of the level of, the level of responsibility within those roles and, uh, and correcting for that. But also just uh around uh attraction and retention of those, uh, of those positions that are really key to the, um, to the swim lessons and to our hours of operation and all the aquatic kind of uh operations. The, uh, we had previously had a marketing coordinator with a, with a secondary focus on events, and, and we shifted that to a real, uh, a more of a focus in events. And with that came kind of a corresponding market correction in the salary. And the vaccine checker, so luckily, we're actually kind of through the vaccine checkers, uh, hopefully for the, for the foreseeable future. And um, so, but that is, uh, was a, a small increase in some of those uh wages, factored into those wages. And uh, the addition of a user experience manager. So I'm going to kind of reference in my, uh, in my next two slide, kind of our current organizational structure and then the, the proposed kind of going forward. But it includes the addition of a, a management position to focus on kind of the uh user experience, personnel management, kind of those, uh, those duties. Uh, salaries and benefits includes the MODL lakes, so guarding and instructing those as well as the instructors and guards for the outdoor pool. So that's a bit of a, you know, hit, it's, this is where it needs to be captured, but that does uh increase that line uh to a significant degree. And then um, and then the Connect Rec, kind of obviously, the, the services we're providing through Connect Rec have increased um some of the programming, uh, programming in terms of computer programming and uh, and kind of reception and things like that that go on at LCLC that wouldn't have previously. Any questions about any of that?
Just the, the salaries for the um, the lifeguards at the lakes and the pool is offset because the two municipalities, then there's a revenue line, right?
That's correct. Yes, that comes back in through that aquatic center line. Um, but it does need to be, it, it goes through our payroll, so it does need to be reflected in, in our payroll, so it's an in and an out.
Yeah, perfect. Uh, Council Bezir?
Yes, um, I know you had mentioned, Kent, about um reimbursement for swim lessons that were canceled from the previous year. I'm just curious, on the revenue side for the ice rink, if you had to do, um, for example, social minor hockey, if they uh paid for ice time? And then was there, were you, were you in the situation where you had to reimburse or give a credit? Or where some of that games were canceled due to?
Yeah.
People comment on that?
Of course, yeah. So it ends up being a cancellation. They, for the most part, um, social minor hockey, um, they don't necessarily pay before. There's so many changes that go on in a nice schedule, um, that they're invoiced kind of at the end of the month. So for example, in December, um, when the restrictions came out that, you know, there were, there were no games, the, the group sizes were limited to ten. Um, they, they cancel pretty much across the board. Um, so uh, it's, it has a significant impact on the revenue whenever all those restrictions had a significant impact on the revenue, certainly. And then they also started a month later than usual. They, um, they didn't start. Uh, they, I think they practiced a bit in September, but they didn't start gameplay until October. Um, so yeah, both of those things were significant.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Not seeing any more hands. Kent, do you want to keep going?
Okay, great. So um, just kind of, as I mentioned, uh, speaking to the organizational chart. So um, for the last uh about three years, I would say, um, this has been the organizational structure. So general manager, admin, finance, scheduler, who kind of has guest for services reporting um to them. Communication and marketing is a position that we added last year in the recognition that that was um kind of an area that we needed to improve. And then operations, building, maintenance, and IT manager. So the operations uh and maintenance staff, as well as the custodial staff ladder up to that person. And then the aquatics manager with uh, obviously aquatics and day camps and active living, um, reporting to that manager. And the um, the proposed kind of going forward is bringing more people, sorry, uh, kind of centralizing the um, the staff into the aquatics manager and the user experience manager. So people who, you know, staff who, it's, it's a, it's unique to find someone who's both an IT and a plant manager and a people manager. And so this would allow us, or this will allow us to um, to kind of get people um leaning on their strengths more in terms of that people management and more, more oversight really on those, uh, on those frontline staff so that our service delivery to the, to the clients is, is that much better. And then facility, maintenance, and IT become a coordinator position. Events and marketing, as I mentioned, events being the, the kind of uh primary focus of that position, also a coordinator. And then finance and administration as a coordinator. Any questions?
Questions on the org charts? No?
So this, uh, this next slide is just the kind of high-level year totals. So we've got um four years going back. You'll see that twenty twenty-one, twenty-two is a forecast since we're still in it. Um, so those are the kind of projections, and then um, and then this year's total. Not sure if you'd like me to go through any of this in detail, or if you've had a chance to review it.
No, I'm just, I'm just looking and seeing that your, your post-pandemic budget is quite close to your pre-pandemic budget. Um, which is kind of, kind of nice to see. I hope that we return to that level of activity. Um, so. Are there any, any questions from council on this? I'd be remiss if I didn't, uh, you know, kind of just call this out for the public. So a lot of money has been uh spent by provincial and federal governments for certain recreation facilities. But municipal recreation facilities like the LCLC have been largely excluded. So um, you know, we've, we've reached out to the province, uh, either municipally or, or through Kent and his team to, to kind of call out that uh inequity, if you will. So um, a few months ago, a few weeks ago, rather, a lot of arenas around the province were, were handed some money, but ours was not. So a lot of these shortfalls in revenue that we saw during COVID um have to be funded by the two municipal partners in the facility just because there's no, um, there hasn't been any kind of uh recreation package coming from the province. Questions?
We'll continue to, we'll continue to lobby for that, um, obviously.
Yeah. Comments? Quiet group? Oh, okay.
I, I just, I also included the kind of uh breakdowns, um, if you're interested. And. Not, I'll go into the capital budget.
That would be great.
Perfect. So um, in the last two years, the capital budget has uh been, been one, two, two or three items, I think. Just because we were working on, on some really significant projects around the uh, the energy conservation and dehumidification. So this year, um, it's some smaller, some smaller items. Um, the, and I'm happy to go through them uh individually if that would be helpful. Mayor Mitchell, what do you?
Um. I don't think, I don't know if we need to go through them one by one, but I just, I want to give council the opportunity to um, to ask questions about individual ones that they have. Uh, Council McDonald?
Uh, I, I think that it, it might be important to note that a lot of these small uh individual items are preventative as well. Um, recognizing that there's an issue and dealing with it before it becomes a big issue, potentially costing more or leading to an, an additional issue. So uh, I, I thought it was great of Kent to, to see it, identify it, and try to deal with it while it's still small. Um, so some of them, while they may not seem like a huge priority, they are, in fact, preventative work.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I, I noted in the, in the kind of verbatim description of each that the, the car chargers are, um, like, I anticipate that we'll get um funding for, for, you know, fifty percent of the car chargers, so we need to kind of scope that. Um, there is some work that goes in because we're increasing, um, our current car chargers are eight years old. And in terms of that technology, that makes them almost completely obsolete. Um, so we don't get a lot of traffic currently, um, because they, they don't fit two of the kind of more modern um charging heads. But uh, I suspect that we'll be able to get a significant uh offsetting kind of grants to uh, to meet that cost.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Uh, Council Thorburn?
Yeah, not, not really much of a ca, question, but we put those uh car chargers in there, would, would the people that use those end up paying for charging their vehicles with the new uh charging system being put in place?
So it, it will certainly have the uh, the ability to uh, to, to collect funds. Um, and, and it's just a question of how much, uh, I think that, that, that's probably a, a board decision about how much um we're gonna actually charge. The nice thing about those meters is they are, um, sorry, the nice thing about those chargers is that they are metered on their own. Um, so we can very easily extrapolate um what the energy cost is. You know, we could, we could project what the um repair maintenance cost is over the, over the kind of life of the chargers and just, and set a price that would allow us to kind of cover the cost of the chargers at least and their, and the energy that's being used.
Great, thank you, because uh, as we move forward, we're just getting a new police car that's going to be electric. So more and more of those vehicles are going to be around and, and uh, people want places to charge them, so we'll see more charges around town.
Yeah, that's right. And the um, the LCLC started with um, with six units, uh, three in the um, three in the kind of parking lot in those center islands and three along the uh, along the, the, the walkway closest to the building. And so we just have the three currently, but the conduit is run for those other three. So over time, if we um, if we do see a, a significant increase in demand, um, we could quite easily uh add that infrastructure.
Great, thank you very much.
I also don't think there's any expectation on free charging anymore as more and more electric vehicles are, are becoming available. And obviously by twenty thirty-five, all of them have to be electric, um, or at least um, no, no fossil fuels. I, I don't think people are, are continually expecting to be able to roll up to a charger and essentially have the taxpayer pay for their, their uh fuel. So uh, we'll definitely, as a board, be looking at that. Council Thorburn? For sure. And improvements to Wi-Fi, people are looking at that capital, capital budget, uh, the continual improvements for Wi-Fi within the facility. Um, I know that's been something that's been a pain point for people, so that's, that's good to. Um, I know that's been something that's been a pain point for people, so that's, that's good to see. Are there any other items you want to call out specifically on that, Kent, on that capital?
No, not, not particularly. I mean, the, the spin bikes, weights and kettleballs are all um, like they're the kind of outlier in a lot of uh, facility stuff. So that's programming, um, programming collateral that'll allow us to um, increase the types of uh, programs we're offering, increase the kind of hours that we are uh, open and, and some of those kind of services that we're, that we're hoping to, to fill.
Yeah, Council Thorburn?
Yeah, maybe I heard you, Kent, but uh, did you say the ice was coming out this year or staying in? I understood you say it was coming out.
Yeah, it's, it's coming out. So um, originally we tendered the um, originally we tendered the energy conservation project with a, a contingency that the ice stayed in. And we got no uh, we got no bids initially for the work. And some of the feedback we got was that the, the logistics around doing the work they need to do um, with the ice in would have been incredibly challenging. Uh, the uh, they are kind of, you know, it, it does involve repiping that, that glycol that, from the uh, from the ice plant that flows onto the pad, under the pad and keeps the, and keeps the ice there. So it's a, a fairly uh, narrow window of time that you can kind of un, uncouple those kind of components. And uh, and so it is going to come out and have the work done and then go back in.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, May, I should say, uh, May, May 2nd is the, the construction starts on the 25th of April. And uh, May 2nd is our date for the ice to come out.
Other questions or comments on this? Kent, did you have other, did you have any other slides to go over?
Yeah, well, I'll just uh, so this kind of brings us down to a grand total at the end. Um, combining an operating grant of uh, $527,458 and a total capital grant of $136,236 for a total of $663,694. And I just made a note at the bottom here that, you know, the, we've, we've been very uh, very fortunate with um, the grants we've received for the energy conservation, dehumidification and solar projects. So um, between the uh, ICIP, uh, investing in Canadian greenhouse gas abatement uh, fund, we got about $600,000 there and um, and more from the province through the uh, recreational fund development. So um, some of the costs of construction have been going up. Um, but uh, you know, I anticipate that we'll have around $600,000 uh, to return to the municipal units at the end of that project. That's, that's already budgeted and uh, and, and kind of set aside, so.
Saving the good news for last.
Yeah.
Should have opened with, after I go through this presentation, I'll have $600,000 for you.
Yeah.
Uh, other questions? I'm also going to get council to refresh your escribe again, just because we had a little bit of correction in the numbers. Um, the numbers we received were not uh, were not the right ones. So just do another refresh. Hearing none. Is someone prepared to make uh, to make the first motion? Council McDonald, thank you.
I almost forgot to unmute. I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approved the Lunenburg County Multipurpose Corporation Capital Budget for 2022, 2023 as presented in document 22 dash 028 in the amount of $272,472.12. Have I got the right one?
Yep.
Is it the updated? Okay. Uh, with each council's contribution being $136,236.236.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Uh, would you like to make the motion for the operating budget as well?
Sure. I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approved the Lunenburg County Multipurpose Corporate Center Corporation Operating Budget for the 2022, 2023 um, as presented in document 22 dash 028, with each municipal unit's contribution being $527,458.
Thank you. Seconded by Council Caldwell. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you, Kent.
Yeah, thank you all very much. See you soon.
Thanks. I can't stress enough how important this facility is when, when I'm doing a tour with new potential doctors. I know Deputy Mayor Tanner gave a, a tour a couple of weeks ago. This is like one of the jewels that we uh, we highlight. And I'm telling you right now, if we did not have that, that tour would be, well, it'd be about 25 minutes shorter. Uh, and we would not be seeing um, the number of physicians and other healthcare workers in our facility that we are. Um, like I, I can just think of two tours I gave specifically last year where that facility brought those doctors here. Because without it, they would, like, it was an, it was no go. They wanted a indoor pool 12 months of the year that was accessible um, for mobility issues. And so we have that. Um, so when you think of a physician and what they do in our community and lives they save and the health that they uh, they, the healthy lifestyles that they contribute to. Um, I know it's a lot of money that this facility costs, but it's worth every penny when you factor in um, what it contributes. So be remiss if I didn't raise that. So thank you again, Kent, to you and your team.
Yeah, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Too. Our next item is tender 21 dash 16E Cultural Resource Archaeological Monitoring. And I'll turn it over to uh, Audrey Buchanan, who's going to explain this one. This is a new one for us.
Good evening, everyone. As part of our ICIP, or Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program funding for Pump Station 11 upgrades and the new force main, we were required to do a detailed environmental assessment, including a borehole program with cultural resource monitoring. Cultural resource monitoring in, indicated no major concerns in the borehole program, but soil layers indicated there was historical activity along the um, riverbanks of the Le Havre River that did cause a little concern for the project going forward. This resulted in a recommendation from the environmental assessment to have cultural resource monitoring by a qualified archaeologist for any ground disturbance in shipyard landing. As a result, we issued tender 21 dash 16E in February for cultural resource services. It closed the 28th of February with two com- compliant bids. The successful low bid was from Cultural Resource Management Group with reporting costs of $5,370, daily monitoring cost of $990 per day and onsite daily monitoring overtime rate of $90 per hour plus $190 in disbursement uh, fees. All costs exclude HST. It should also be noted that this is a unit price contract that depends on the project schedule and any additional archaeological discoveries. The anticipated costs are within the pre-approved budget, provided construction schedules are not dramatically delayed and no significant cultural resources are found throughout the investigation. So this evening, we would ask for the approval of the unit price tender of 21 dash 16E to the low bidder Cultural Resource Management. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Questions from council? It's quite straightforward. Uh, Council Caldwell?
Um, I must say I was a bit taken aback by the price tag associated with it. Um, but I, I was wondering, uh, can council or staff be informed if something of significance is found? Because I noticed uh, went on a list of uh, those would, that would be informed if something was found.
Yes, um, staff will be automatically informed if any major resources are found and we would definitely notify council and senior management.
Uh, Council McDonald?
So it sounds like the, the project, this adds kind of a layer of sensitivity to the project. Could it add delays? Uh, you know, what, what does this mean for a project? You know, if, if there's kind of question in a certain area, could it mean that work stops as they investigate or how does it work?
It, it absolutely does mean work can stop if a significant uh, discovery or even if um, some of the soil layers that they go through change dramatically in color, texture and it presents any kind of cultural uh, looking uh, I guess uh, sightings or possibilities. You don't necessarily have to find an artifact. If they get in a layer of soil that they feel uh, looks like it's natural and undisturbed, they will want to go through that a little more slowly than they would if it's already disturbed ground. So we do anticipate it may slow down a bit of construction, but we also know that this area is highly disturbed. And that's why the risk is fairly minimal, but the closer we go to the river edge, the, the more chance we have. So that's why it was flagged.
You have a follow up?
So if uh, if there was something of significance found, um, and they, you know, the timeline expands and there's more services required, is there a fund or is there someone that would share in that cost or would that lie completely with the municipality?
That will lie completely with the municipality.
Okay.
Other questions? I was, I, like Counsel Caldwell, I was a little, I was a little taken aback by the, by the price. Um, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around um, just what this now means. Uh, I would anticipate that in other projects that we have, that this will be something that we will require. Um, but I also recognize that it's important um, because, you know, as we opened the meeting, uh, acknowledging that we're in McMoggy and uh, we're doing work that where there could be items of cultural significance that we would want um, preserved and we would not want to find out after the fact that we uh, you know, built something and destroyed something that was very important um, to the people that were here long before us. So um, I see the uh, the cost is, is almost, I don't want to say insignificant, but if, if we found something that was, that was certainly important, then um, it will turn out that the cost was well worth it, I guess. That's just my thoughts on that. Other questions or comments? Council McDonald?
Full of them tonight. Um, is there?
That's all right.
Um, any sort of um, mapping that is or could be done to kind of identify areas that, that may be of more significance than others? And then if we're looking at a potential project, we're maybe avoiding some of those areas?
I asked that same question this morning at our staff meeting.
So part of the background information that they do uh, in the environmental assessment, they actually take uh, historical mapping of the area, they take um, provincial, they take any resource they can find and they compile all that information together and that's how they come up with the recommendation that they had. And that's why they felt that the river edge was the most um, I guess, potential for a significant find. And that, and as we move towards the road, there's a lot less chance. But that all is incorporated into the information that uh, came forward with this decision.
Others? Hearing none. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yes, please?
Yes. Uh, I move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater award the unit price tender 21 dash 16E Cultural Resource Archaeology Monitoring to the lower bidder Cultural Resource Management Group Limited, based on the following unit price cost of $5,370. Reporting requirements, $990 a day onsite monitoring cost and $90 an hour. Onsite daily monitoring overtime rate plus $190 in overtime dispersments. All unit price costs are plus net HST.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Coughlin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Our next item is application to purchase land, proposed lot A 336 St. Philip's Street by Michelin North America. Let's turn it over to our economic development guru.
Good evening. How's everybody this evening?
We're great, Greg.
Okay, um, basically the report by way of background and discussion, um, a completed application to purchase land for $60,000 post receipt from uh, Michelin North America, Canada Incorporated uh, for the portion of PID 60023801, shown as proposed lot A in appendix A to the report. And the property in question is located at 336 St. Philip's Street. Uh, the application was received uh, by staff February 1.
Oh, Greg, you, you muted yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. I said the uh, the application was received February 1, uh, January, uh, February 1, 2022. And the property in question is uh, approximately 2.85 acres in size. Um, staff had valued the land in the business park at $40,000 per acre for serviced land and $20,000 per acre for unserviced lots per, on a per acre basis. So the lot in question is directly opposite the northwest corner of the facility where the currently proposed expansions will be constructed. And the specific land has no requirement for water or sewer services. Uh, and easement's been previously negotiated with Nova Scotia Power to accommodate the realignment of Michelin's power lines. And the easement traverses the proposed lot A as shown in appendix B of the report. As a condition of the agreement of purchase and sale, the town uh, at, at the town's expense would uh, would uh, subdivide the lot prior to April 1, uh, 2022. In terms of uh, financial uh, budget implications, the net proceeds would be deposited to the capital reserve fund as required by the municipal government act and subdivision, including su- surveyor and registration is estimated at approximately $2,000. And such would be withdrawn from the land sales and land preparation and marketing account. So there are no uh, real estate brokerage commissions. Uh, legal fees would also be incurred uh, in association with the agreement of purchase and sale and recording the transfer uh, the D transfer, rather. And uh, in terms of strategic priorities, this relates to land sales. So in terms of options, the option would be to accept the recommendation uh, to accept the offer of $60,000 and authorize staff to execute an agreement of purchase and sale with Michelin North America, Canada. Uh, or conversely, make a counter offer for staff to present back to the prospective buyer or finally to decline the offer.
All right, thank you. Uh, questions from council? Pretty straightforward. Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Caldwell, please?
I move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater accept the $60,000 offer and authorize staff to execute an agreement of purchase and sale with Michelin North America, Canada, Inc. For that portion of PID 60023801, I hope I got that number right.
Correct.
Outlined, outlined in appendix A of document 22 dash 021 as proposed lot A.
Right, thank you. Seconded by Counsel Coughlin. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Good evening.
Uh, our next item, 9.4, reappointment uh, of Faye Patty to the Bridgewater Board of Police Commissioners. Uh, it's a valuable member of that uh, that board for sure. So great to see her reappointment. Is someone prepared to make that motion? Uh, Counsel Frasier, I think had her hand up first.
Uh, yes. Um, I move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of Bridgewater Board of Police Commissioners and, and reappoint Faye Patty, Patty to the commission for a second term ending October 31st, 2023. for a second term ending October 31, 2024.
Great. Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Caldwell. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. We're down to 9.5, which is Bridgewater Police Service 2022-23 Operational Budget. And I did see Chief Feener is on the call.
Yep. Good evening, everyone. It's basically a motion from the Chair of the Police Commission to advise council that at our last meeting, the commission has agreed to the budget presented to them for 2223 operating budget. So basically, it is net expenses is $4,445,021.
All right. So just so counsel, so council members, we don't, we don't pick apart the by, the budget line by line. We, we approve the final number, but, or we don't approve the final number. So, but the chief is here and CAO for questions. I know the CAO has some comments. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just going to point out to council maybe that Scott, you could speak to it in terms of the operating budget. We do have a, I guess, an amount of revenue coming from contracts for criminal records checks, I believe, for the most part. And if, if I was reading that right, it's around 300, 3, no, $500,000 in revenue that comes from those contracts. So 200,000 of that would be placed in a reserve. So council set a reserve up a couple of years ago with the intent that we would take the, the revenue that came from those contracts and set that aside and planning for when the lease expires and having some options to go forward with in terms of whether we build new or retrofit another building or whatever it may be. And if we did decide not to use it for that, then it could be used for other capital as well. So this year it looks like 500,000. So you had some increases in revenue over last year and we're, we're putting some of that into reserve. And the rest is being used as a general revenue to fund, fund police services.
Yeah, that's correct. For the council's information, there was a significant increase in, in third-party criminal record checks and, and revenue generated. So we've continued to keep the reserves as, as 200,000 as over the past couple of years. And, you know, and then, of course, if there's any additional savings from our operating years, council has the ability to, to place more in reserves or use as general revenue for the town, town budget.
Are there any questions, Counselor Caldwell? And I should call, clarify my earlier, I didn't word it properly. So this, this goes to our budget and we, we deal with it at our budget time.
Correct.
Specifically, yeah. So Counselor Caldwell, give your hand up.
I think there was an increase of almost $200,000 for constables. I'm just wondering about the need for that. What's, what's happening there?
So there was a, yeah, so basically there was a presentation done to the commission to increase our complement by one full-time member. So part of the $200,000 increase is also part of the collective agreement and required salary adjustments come April 1st for all staff, except for, I think, I believe there's four of us that aren't currently engaged within the, the union collective agreement. So part of that is to increase staff and salary dollars. And the other one is for a new constable's position.
This is the first, what was the last time we increased staff, like the?
So we have not, yeah, we have not increased our staff since the year 2000, except for the provincial positions. So we do have three provincial, three provincial positions. One is filled or fulfilled dollar for dollar. And the other ones are a lump sum payment from Department of Justice towards their salaries and costs.
But, but not, so a regular patrol officer, for example, it's been, it's been 22 years then?
22 years, yes, since we've increased our complement for sworn members. The other three members paid for by the province are all specialized members for certain types of services, whether it's our SSRO or our street crime enforcement or intel officer.
Okay. Other, Counselor McDonald?
Just out of curiosity, and I hope that you're not facing this in the coming year, but how was your budget impacted by COVID? And how did you kind of absorb that into your, your budget?
So for us, it's, it actually, believe it or not, helped us. It saved on costs for training. So we actually will be under budget again this year, our operating budget for 2122 by, by a couple hundred thousand with the additional revenues from our third-party checks on top of what we were putting away. I guess next year we'll hopefully be back to some normalcy. We'll actually see what we're going to spend. But, you know, it's definitely challenging times. We've paid a lot in overtime as a result of members being off sick and with COVID restrictions and protocols, isolation, backfilling shifts, but then have been offset by in other areas of the budget.
Other questions or comments? Okay, so this will, this will be in our regular budget deliberations. If you have questions regarding items on there, you can, you can send those either through one of our council representatives on the, the Board of Commission, Police Board of Commissioners, or through the Chair of that, of that commission as well. Okay. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Good night.
Have a good night. Our 9.6 is research agreement between Town of Bridgewater and McGill University for Energy Poverty in Bridgewater. And I see Leon is here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Hope you're all doing well this evening.
I feel like we haven't seen you in a long time here, Leon.
It has been a while. Yeah, it's nice to be back.
I mean, I see you every day, but I feel like we haven't seen you here.
Hopefully, hopefully in person again soon as well. I have a brief report that I can, just to summarize for this item and the next item as well, if, if you're interested.
Yep.
Okay, so we have an opportunity here to enter into a research agreement with McGill University. This is an opportunity to work with a national leader in energy poverty research to support the Energize Bridgewater program. We are required by our major funder, Infrastructure Canada, as part of the Smart Cities Challenge Contribution Agreement, to do a thorough analysis of how the program and the federal dollars that are supporting the program are leading to real and impactful change in people's lives. And as we gear up toward deploy the program starting this year, we have an opportunity to do what's called a baseline survey. So to, to really understand the impact of energy poverty on our residents, explore that in much greater detail than what we've done before. And we essentially have this research team under the direction of Dr. Milen Riva, Canada Research Chair in Housing, Community and Health at McGill University to lead essentially a national caliber program for understanding in-depth energy poverty in our community. And the idea would be that this research would contribute toward our programmatic understanding of, of what the state our community is in, which then we would look for opportunities to then repeat that same work a few years from now, once the program has been deployed and we're able to measure actual change in the community. So this achieves a significant requirement of the Smart Cities Challenge Funding Agreement. And it also represents a significant opportunity for Dr. Riva and her research team, because they've been looking for a community to really partner with to do energy poverty research on the ground. This item actually has come before council before. Back in February of 2020, council was asked if we were interested in entering into a major funding application with Dr. Riva for the Canadian Institutes of Health Research for a whopping $1.5 million grant application. Unfortunately, we were unsuccessful. There was a little bit of money that came out of that that supported Dr. Riva's background work since then. But we were unfortunately unsuccessful. And so I'm reporting back to council the outcome of that, of that initial council interest that's been expressed. Since then, there's been a little bit of silence from our research partner. But in the fall, we heard back from Dr. Riva and she said that she had acquired sufficient resources to be able to implement this baseline survey in the community in the spring of 2022, so within, within a few months from now. And that basically she was only short $20,000 to be able to make that work. So we reviewed the, the staff team reviewed the, the, the research concept with her, found that she was able to pull off essentially the kind of, of background research at minimum that we would require and then some. And then that with, with, with a bit of funding support from the town, significantly less than half the value of the, the project, she would be able to pull off that work. The, the research would involve putting four members of Dr. Riva's research team in Bridgewater for a period of a month to a month and a half, starting in May. And that the researchers would do a combination of online and in-person, sort of a door-to-door, as well as a public spaces survey that would ask in, in, in quite a bit of detail people to explain their experience of, of energy, energy cost, energy affordability, energy poverty. And that Dr. Riva's team would then anonymize that data, make that available to the town in a, in a completely, again, anonymized way so that we could then report it to our, our funder. And at the same time, that would, that would further Dr. Riva's research into this important topic. So the staff team has reviewed this. We've undergone legal review of the contract, as well as insurance and risk, risk review. Everything in the contract has met our needs and expectations. And the way that we would recommend that council, should council be interested, approve this research agreement with McGill University would be to enact the alternative procurement practice, because we would be procuring this as a service essentially from a public body or nonprofit organization. This, of course, being a, a research institute, a university. The only other thing that I will say about this is that there is a little section at the end of the, the council report, talking about four different ways that Bridgewater residents would be informed about the survey and, and have the opportunity to participate. Postcards being mailed to all residents of Bridgewater, asking them if they would like to participate. A survey link to be posted on Bridgewater's website so that it shows that the town is supporting the work of these researchers and it's a, it's a legitimate survey kind of thing. Posters around the community and also being distributed by some of our program partners. And then the researchers will also recruit residents in public spaces and by going door-to-door in neighborhoods in order to ensure that there's a maximum response rate. And we are, we are hoping for over 500 responses to this survey. So it's a significant survey, which is why the level of effort is also required to make it statistically very meaningful. So that's our report. I'm happy to respond to any questions about the draft research agreement that's been attached to the report.
Thanks, Leon. Any questions or comments from council on that? It's going to give us some very good data, very important data. That'll help us go forward. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Caldwell?
I move that Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the proposed research agreement between the Town of Bridgewater and McGill University and direct staff to finalize and execute the agreement in substantive accordance with the draft presented in Document 20-042A.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item is between, agreement between Town of Bridgewater and Tapestry Community Capital Consulting Services.
Okay. And it's me again. Surprise. So similarly, I'll just give a brief overview. So this consulting contract has been, we've been through the wringer with this a couple of times, trying to retain a qualified consultant to deliver these services. It turns out that the services that we are looking for in order to help us finalize the design of our community energy investment system are fairly niche in the Canadian landscape. Unfortunately, we've had two RFPs that have not been successful. And at its last, the last time council discussed this item, council approved the use of the alternative procurement method of basically entering into a direct discussion with a potential service provider to provide us with the, the services that we need under the direction of the CAO's office. I have worked to connect directly with the organization that was the leading firm in the, in the open market procurements that we did go through, although there was no actual successful application as part of it. But we reached out directly to Tapestry Community Capital in order to engage them in, and to see if they could deliver the services that we were interested in. And the resulting service, draft service agreement for your consideration is the, is the outcome of that process. Just a few highlights. So Tapestry Community Capital is a community investment firm based in Toronto that works across Canada and has particular experience in public and private sector finance, has demonstrated experience in the clean tech sector, which means renewable energy, energy efficiency and so on, and triple bottom line financing, impact investor networks, community or impact investing and community investment vehicles. So these were some of the criteria that we were looking for in the original ask for a, for a proponent. They have been active for over 20 years and have set up very innovative community energy financing systems, including solar share and zoo share, which are two fascinating renewable energy, you know, cooperative investment type systems effectively. If there's websites in the staff report, if you're curious. So the service provision agreement that we've, we've been able to work out is for them to support us with conceptual design and financial modeling of the investment system, recommend development and procurement pathways for any third-party services that we would need in order to implement the system, as well as a human resource plan for any internal components to the system. And when I say internal components, I mean things like, we really need an external advisor at this point to really help us figure out how to make the most, for example, of our PACE financing system. We've, we've gone kind of as far as we can in terms of, you know, developing that program and, and putting some solutions on the program that make use of the PACE financing system. But now we really need an external expert to provide us with a kind of an impartial and experienced view on how to make that, that program even more successful. So that's the kind of a, a, a system component that we, that we're, that this firm would support us with. And then how do we work that, you know, internally as a finance department, Energize Bridgewater team and so on? Doing so will allow us to understand whether the investment system concept is viable, how we would move forward with it, and also e- even decide whether to proceed with the components of it that we have identified to date as being conceptually of interest. But now we need someone to really run the numbers for us and understand whether they are going to pay off in the long run or not, based on their analysis. Any findings that come from this work would be brought to town council for then further, you know, assessment to say, is this something the town wants to do? Or do we want to choose option A versus option B and so on? is this something the town wants to do? Or do we want to choose option A versus option B and so on? There is a two two other parts of the agreement, one of which is a retainer for provisional services. So if we went above and beyond the base contract, we have, we don't need to go back to the open market to do that. We would be able to just engage them and get them to do a bit more work for us. And then finally, there is a clear provision in the contract that says that these folks would only be able to provide us with consulting services. So they can't, for example, turn around and say, oh, and we have a product for you that would, you know, use our platform or whatever. Like this is really about paying them to provide impartial recommendations for what kind of investment solutions we need and and not tied to their own services. And that was an important consideration because they're in the financial, I guess it's called the fintech space or the 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 financial technology space as well. And there's a number of other great Canadian firms that work there. Having them complete this design work for us would meet the requirements of our updated Smart Cities Challenge contribution agreement. And the way that we would retain their services once again would be through the alternative procurement process that council approved last last meeting. And it would be because of a lack of open market response that we clearly exhausted that opportunity. We're now entering into direct procurement essentially. So that would be enabled by that clause. Total value, $74,000 and change plus HST or plus net of HST comes to $77,000 and change. And this would be covered by the energized Bridgewater budget and the funding from the government of Canada's Smart Cities Challenge program, no impact on the town's tax base. It does say in the staff report that there is final legal review ongoing for this item. That's wrapped up and there's been no no other issues, legal or insurance that have come up with this contract. So staff is feeling confident with the with the material. Happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Thanks, Leon. Questions from council? I was glad to see that the kind of the note in there that's removing that conflict of interest. I like that not essentially not, you're just consulting, you're not going to then try to upsell us or supersize us, whatever with that another product. Counsel Thorburn.
Yeah, just wondering if that price should be in the motion? There's no dollar amount there. I just wondered that should be there or is not required? I'm happy either way. Just asking the question.
Yeah, it can be the contract notes the the dollar value that council would be authorizing execution of, but doesn't hurt to include it.
Yeah, I think we're we're accustomed to, and and I do think it is important in in normal circumstance, we do put the the number in the motion. Especially because a lot of times if the public is scanning, they might just see the motions, right? They just want to see what happened, who said what kind of thing. And if you don't have the price there, they may not then refer up to the document. But by putting it in the motion, they they get what what most people are looking for, which is how much are you spending of our money? So I would I would agree with Counsel Thorburn and I'd kind of like to see whether it's in this motion or just make sure in future motions that we have we have the the price in there. And it can just be the net HST price. I know sometimes we have the cost and then we add the HST and then we also note the net HST. So we can, we can add that in if someone is prepared to make the motion. I'm just scanning the document to see. Leon, do you have that exact dollar figure right in front of you?
Yeah, I have the contract value. Sorry, I I just want to say that how would you like us to handle the provisional component then? Because there is, would you like us to come back to council if there is a anything? Because the provisional services are both for additional services as part of the main contract. But then there's also a piece around the retainer and the the further services.
And we don't know the value of those as of yes, right? Like in terms of, you may, you may or may not do some of the additional work and so we may, we may, if we if we make it exclusive, then we will have to come back with the amount.
So is council okay with the motion as it is worded, referring to the document that does have the amount in it? And we'll just make sure going forward that we include the the dollar figure. Counsel Thorburn, you okay with that?
Yes, I am. Long, the public's got the right to know what this stuff costs and and we've always used to give them to that dollar figure on motions.
Yeah.
It's 77,458 net HST for the work that we're going to to commence with them. And that excludes the provisional or retainer amounts.
Okay, and that is in document 21 dash 151B, which is referenced in the in the motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel Conklin.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I move that council for the town of Bridgewater approved the proposed consulting services agreement between the town of Bridgewater and Tapestry Community Capital. And direct staff to finalize and execute the agreement subject to legal review and any resulting changes being in substantive accordance with the draft contained in document 21 dash 151B.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Thorburn. Discussion, again, that figure, that dollar figure, just for reference, is $77,458.43, just in case anyone's, again, wondering. We have a mover and a seconder. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item is the January 2022 monthly report from Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program as well as the 2021 annual report. I do see that they're moving to quarterly reporting going forward, which is probably a good idea. They're busy without having to write these reports every month. I did want to note just for the public, just this one section on the report, 1,339 clients, 459 new referrals, 392 home visits. They did 150, 150 in their presentation participation. They distributed 75 vials of life and they did 416 community outreach projects. Like they're incredibly busy. The service they do is incredibly valuable. And so again, thank you to that team. Then any questions, you can reach out to them. And then we'll see their reports going forward in quarterly. T C A O Crowder.
And just an also to point out with with the budget that was recommended by the Police Commission attached to that was a request from the Lunenburg County Senior Safety Partnership Society for increased municipal funding. So that request has gone out to all the municipal units and it's autumn, it's in, it's in the budget that was recommended by the Police Commission Board to council as well. So I think they were looking at a $8,372 and that was to help continue to fund the program. And so just so that you're aware of that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Our next item is 9.9, our strategic priorities for 2223. And I'll turn it over to the C A O.
Okay, so council had undergone a workshop in January and then in February, February 16th to once again do their annual strategic priority development. And this helps inform the development of the operating and capital budgets as well as the work plans for each department and the staff within them. So it's important that we ensure that what what staff resources are being allocated to aligns with what council's expectations are. And this is one of the key ways to do that. So through that workshop, we we developed the priorities of council and that is noted and the strategic priorities chart. We've also noted for council, those things that have a financial implication in terms of are unable to be accommodated within the existing baseline or existing resources that that council has. So there's 263,500 worth of initiatives that you'll see in the operating budget come forward as proposals in order to accomplish the priorities that council has set out. So attached to this, you also have the work program and the work program sets out the specific actions that staff are proposing to take with respects to each of the priorities that council has developed. And I'll just highlight for for council and the public listening what the priorities are. The work plan goes into the detailed steps. So that documents there if you have any questions about the detailed steps and what check in points we'll have with council, then we're certainly happy to answer that. So with respects to the priorities, of course, exit 12A is a priority for council and that's what we call now priority, meaning we're working on it now. And it has some timelines that are more immediate. So this is to do some master planning and some develop a marketing strategy for how we will develop the land north of the interchange that the town owns. Now we'll open that up and develop it and how we'll market it and get it ready for sale. And the objective there is, of course, to see land sales by 2023, 24, and that's our, that's our goal. And we've got some defined times that will bring back concept plans and appraised values and and our proposed marketing approach. At the workshop, council did have some concerns that we wanted to be a little bit more ready than than the end of the third quarter for for being in a position to sell land. So we have moved some of those timelines up. So that will be commencing marketing in October of 2022, and that's certainly the target. The wastewater strategy rate transition, this is about transitioning our sewer rate from a a number that doesn't reflect actual cost to a consumption based rate. So finance will be bringing forward a plan for that. An affordable housing plan, this is a plan that would help identify options for the town in terms of our land use planning and how we can accommodate affordable housing there. Incentives and what options are available for for the town with some best practices and the development of a grant program. So staff will be actually starting in March, you'll start seeing stuff come forward with respects to that. And I would note there that we are proposing in the budget that there'd be 25,000 for that grant program. Branding and marketing strategy, so not only for exit 12A, but for the entire town. How do we, how do we brand and market the town? For for investment, we need to be strategic in that. And so this would be to develop that marketing strategy with the outcome of increased land sales and an increased profile for the town, which would result in obviously increased development activity. And we would propose some funds within the budget to help with some of the the media and and website profile graphic design work that would go into all of that. Investment attraction strategy, and this would be about being strategic about who we try to attract to invest in the town of Bridgewater. So what are, what are the, what are the sectors? And and we're instead of just throwing spaghetti up and seeing what sticks, it's it's about knowing where we should go and how we should market or 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 try to get the investment for the town. So this would be a plan that's measurable. We'd see increased employment, land sales, new businesses, increased tax base, those types of outcomes and measurable outcomes. And the plan would identify the sectors or industry targets and and identify investment opportunities that we could pursue. Asset management is about understanding our assets, what they are, what their condition is, their life cycle and where the gaps are in terms of when when placement's required and do we have enough funding and how do we fund that? So giving council some good information that informs your decision making when it comes to capital planning. And it is a requirement of a federal funding agreement as well. So we'll see that develop this year, the plan and the program. It's a very long term investment in terms of actually completing it and gathering all the data, but it's the starting point for for the town. And we're just waiting for FCM to advise us on funding. The green charter, this came out of your economic development strategy and this is came out of the need to ensure commitment to clean energy and greenhouse gas emission reductions and and all that we do. So the outcome would be this green charter that was really gives us that economic development proposition. And and sees our our organizational culture shift and that we are committed to agreeing in sustainable community. And there are, there is funds within the budget to see that develop this year. So that's one thing council had asked that rather than do it in 2324, that we move that up and and try to accomplish that in 2223. Wastewater strategy and planning policy, and this is to align our planning policy with our wastewater infrastructure and any in any limitations with respects to capacity. And this will be done as part of the plan review, which will be bringing a a plan review charter forward to to council that outlines the steps that we propose to take in that. Development and infrastructure charges, this is is more of a developing a plan on how infrastructure that supports development gets paid for, who pays for it? When a new development comes in and a road needs to be built and sewer and water need to be put in or sidewalks? How how does that get funded? Is that a developer responsibility? Town, is it the mix? Is there a formula that could be used? What are other areas do? So we'll be doing that research and bringing back an option for council in terms of having a clear, consistent policy. And it will also be important for marketing our lands that we that it's clearly developers, what our expectations are and how we would do those calculations. So there is some funding in the budget to see that accomplished this year. Infrastructure master plan is just continuing to look at our undeveloped areas of town and how infrastructure can be best laid out and any issues that we need to be aware of with respects to infrastructure in those areas. And so it's 40,000 a year that we budget for that. And we are going to take another look at the lands north of the 103 under this when we look at changing some of the land use provisions. We want to make sure that we understand what implications that has for the infrastructure that would support that. And we'd be looking at the west side of town as well. Transit feasibility expansion is looking at one, the modal request as well as options for expansion within the town of Bridgewater. And is it feasible and where should that be? Given all the growth and development that we are having as well as what we anticipate to have. Attainable housing, this will be done as part of the plan review, but it's it's to look at how do we ensure good housing and choice and availability within the town, not only affordable, but housing in general to meet all the needs of our population. So it would support a full spectrum of housing in this plan. And it would look at options for the town and what our role could be in doing that. The development of the North Parkade or the sorry downtown development in the North Parkade. This mainly comes out of the question about is the North Parkade necessary? Do we need it? It does have some big capital numbers involved in ensuring that if it's needed, that it stays there. And so the question is natural, do we need it? So the parking study is going to be complete and then we'll know, and that may necessitate a reevaluation of the downtown master plan. The organization review, so council has, you know, I might saw a question about we're growing. There's increased demands, increased services that the town town's being expected to provide. Is our organization structured appropriately to to meet those needs and demands? So we identified that there were immediate needs that we know we have some pressures on us right now. We also identified that we may be looking at some changes to how we receive the public. And that could impact an org review. So council had suggested we do the immediate needs now and look at what we need to meet what's coming at us in terms of development pressures. And then and following year do a more comprehensive organization review. Riverfront enhancement, this was about looking, as we know, the river's a an asset for the town. And this is to come up with policies, plans and actions to enhance and protect the riverfront for economic development as well as for environmental values. So we'd be looking at strategic acquisition of land as well as how to protect land along the riverfront. And there are funds in the budget to do this as well. There would be a review of the downtown water master plan and then a flood risk mitigation strategy. And municipal plan review is a requirement that we have to have complete. I believe it's due by 2024 to be done. So an aggressive timeline and we'll start that this year. And there are some funds to have some consultant support for some research that we would have to do as part of that. Council size review is required by the Municipal Government Act and that we review the size of council and that is to be done before the end of the calendar year in 2022. So that's on the list. That's something that is going to be in the work plan. The accessibility action plan is required by provincial legislation. So provincial legislation requires that municipalities meet accessibility standards. And so they look at various areas such as good And so they look at various areas, such as goods and services, information and communication, so how we communicate, how we provide information, transportation, employment in the built environment. So our spaces, our outdoor spaces, our sidewalks, our buildings, how we, as I say, how we provide information. So we have to develop a plan, meet those standards. The standards are still being developed, but there are some proposed standards. So our accessibility coordinator is working with staff now, and we have her targeted to bring an update to council, to give council an idea of what the standards are and where some of our gaps may be. And then energized Bridgewater is clearly on the list, and as councils are aware, there's a lot of actions that fall under that category, and all relates to our smart cities win in our contribution agreement with the federal government, where we have key milestones and deliverables that we have to do. So those are listed there as well in terms of what we anticipate we will have completed this fiscal year. So that's your, those are your strategic priorities, and what we'd be looking for is for council to approve the strategic priorities as presented, if you're comfortable with them, with the financial implications being referred to the 2223 operating budget for deliberation.
Thanks for going through all that. Questions or comments from council? I know we've been through this a few times. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Just one, it may have been asked, and I've forgotten the answer, but what's the timeline for receiving the feasibility study from modal?
We are supposed to get that feasibility study in March is when we were told. I think it was supposed to be like March 7th or 8th or thereabouts. So Mackenzie's going to do a check-in and see where that's at.
Thank you.
Other questions? Someone prepared to put a motion on the floor?
I will, your worship.
Thank you.
I would move council for the town of Bridgewater approve the strategic priorities for the 202223 fiscal year in the associated work plan as presented in Document 22-023, with the financial implications of the same to be referred to the 2223 budget deliberations.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. Next is the QP collective agreement memorandum of settlement with QP Local 2091.
Okay, so the collective agreement with the QP Local 1092 expired March 31st, 2021, and we have just completed negotiations with the union, with a tentative agreement reached through conciliation, and that was reached on February 4th. And we had the meeting with council and given council updates in camera as we progressed to get, seek direction from council. The final negotiated proposal is subject to council's approval, and it's also subject to the approval of the union membership. So the union membership had voted and approved it, and it's here tonight for council's consideration. The key changes are noted in the report, and that has to do with overtime and reducing the banks from 200 to 160 hours. Standby pay has been negotiated to increase from 250 to 300, and that number hasn't changed for a while. And that represents a $10,000 increase annually to the employer. Protected clothing, there's a few things in here, cost of eye exams to be covered when the medical plan does not cover that. So that's rare, but sometimes that does happen. And work boot allowance is to increase from 250 to 300, and that just reflects that they cost a bit more now, and that has a cost of $1,750 to the employer. Next is wages, and so the wages would have a, see a 3% increase each year for the four years of the collective agreement. And I would note the last agreement was a three-year contract. So we got this proposed before, and the annual costs are noted there as well. With this year's cost being $54,500, wages would be retroacted to April 1st, 2021. And then there are two Labor One employees who have had their wages red circled during previous negotiations because they didn't quite, they were at a higher wage when our facility, our arena, closed, and it came to the Labor One grouping, but the wages were higher. So they got red circled. But in order to provide for an economic adjustment and recognition that those would be red circled for many years, there was a $1,500 per year economic adjustment proposed. That would have an annual cost of $300 to the employer, and then just a small increase in mechanics tool allowance. So those are the more significant ones. There's a total cost for the package of $275,457 over the four-year period. And that's wages and everything included within that. And this year, in the 202122 fiscal year that we're presently in, we had budgeted a 2.5% wage increase, because that was the wage increases that they had negotiated before in their previous collective agreement. So there's a $9,500 shortfall, because we didn't anticipate a 3% increase at that time. And then the $3,000 for the economic adjustment for the two Labor One positions. So it's about $12,000 difference between what we had budgeted in this current fiscal year. Legal counsel had been involved in the negotiations throughout this whole process, so well aware of the proposed terms and no concerns there. So the options for council are to approve the memorandum of settlement and authorize the execution of the same, or council can refuse, upon which we'd have to advise the union, and we'd have to determine what the next steps would be.
Questions or comments from council? I know we discussed this to get to this point. Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Conklin?
Thank you, your worship. I move that council for the town of Bridgewater approve the memorandum of settlement with QP Local 1092, as agreed by QP and the bargaining team on February 4, 2022, and as presented in Document 21-023E.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor McDonald. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. Down to business arising, unfinished business, our last meeting, we had a presentation regarding the federal Ghost Gear Fund, and a request was made of us to bring forward to a council meeting, which would be today, to ask the federal minister for fisheries to support the continuance of the sustainable fisheries solution and retrieval for another two years. And so that request is here now. Is someone prepared to make that motion?
I can, your worship, review.
Thank you, Councilor Thorburn.
I would move that council for the town of Bridgewater write a letter to Honorable Joyce Murray, federal fisheries minister, supporting the continuance of the initial two years Sustainable Fisheries Solutions and Retrieval Support Contribution Program, and further urge residents to pick up and recycle litter that they find when visiting the coastal areas to aid in protecting marine life and keeping our oceans clean.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor McDonald. Any discussion or debate on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. Our last item is, under new business, is FCM Annual Conference Appointment of Delegates. So for, just a refresher, for the NSFM conference and the FCM conference, because delegates vote, we have to officially appoint delegates to allow them to vote. So unlike some other events that we go to, it doesn't necessarily have to come back to council for an official motion. This does. So I will be attending the FCM, both as mayor and as a board member of the FCM, and I'm opening the floor up to see if there is interest from anyone else on council to attend. It is in Regina in June. It's not like next week or anything in Regina. So I don't know. I've heard from a couple that just aren't available. So I don't know if there's others who are interested, June 2nd to 4th, I believe. Any interest? I'm not going to take it personally if nobody wants to go. All right. Deputy Mayor, you didn't want to go? I know you were kind of on the fence.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to attend. I think I attended three years ago when it was in Quebec, maybe. I can't, I've lost track of time, but yeah, I mean, I'm happy to, certainly happy to attend. It's a worthwhile conference, that's for certain. I'm not sure about Regina in June, but.
Well, it's not Regina in April. Yeah, it's, to me, it's such a big, it's such a big conference with so many things going on, that it's impossible for one person to actually take in all the, all the things. I know that, I know Councilor Fager's been, I don't know who else has been, but it's certainly, I know that there's incredible value, and we come back with quite a bit of information. So you are interested in going, then, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, it would be interesting going, certainly, if no one else wants to go.
Anyone else who's interested? Hearing none, is someone prepared to make a motion to appoint myself and Deputy Mayor Tanner as delegates? Councilor Conklin?
I move that council for the town of Bridgewater appoint Mayor David Mitchell and Deputy Mayor Andrew Tanner as delegates for the 2022 FCM conference, and approve registration, accommodations, and reasonable associated expenses.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor McDonald. A debate? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, motion is carried. Thank you. Next year's, I believe, is in Toronto, and then I don't know where it is. I don't know if it goes back out west, or if it comes east again, because it was in Halifax about four years ago, and then Quebec three years ago. You are, that was the last one, I think, was Quebec three years ago. So, anyway. Okay, that brings us to the end of our meeting. Look at that, 7:59, with no further business and no in-camera meeting tonight. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Thorburn. Seconded by Councilor Fager. Thank you. We are adjourned.
So.